To kick off a work-study session on building permit fees. I guess we'll wait on Mark to get back in here and get started. So I just opened the meeting and let you get, kick off there if you will, get started.
Great, thank you Commissioner McDaniel, pardon my out of breath here, running up the stairs. Commissioners, I'm Mark Dentreiter, Director of Community and Economic Development. And for this work-study session, we're going to be talking about building permit fees. Basically, where we are currently with fees, talk about the data inputs and look at some of the math, the calculations. Also, an important piece of this exercise today is to look at other jurisdictions and then provide some examples and a comparison activity there. And also talk about what these other jurisdictions are doing specifically with their formulas and are there any options, which there are for you all to consider to adjust fees, you know, in the future or for this year? And then, as you received earlier today, do some read-ahead materials. So basically, I'd like to just go through those. Also, at this time, like to introduce at the table, have our planning manager, Rob Dana, with us, and also Matt Denny, the regional manager for Safe Build, who's one of our contractors. So if we turn to the materials in the way of handouts, we can start where, on a BOCC resolution from January 25th, actually, January 25th of 2023. So the previous board, actually Commissioner Schroeder was part of that board, approved a resolution to use the August 2022 International Code Council, that's the ICC, Building Valuation Table, Data Table. There are three primary components when we're talking about that math, if you will, to arrive at a total building permit fee. So the first piece is what is called the permit fee. Then you have the plan review fee and then a use tax fee. So all three of those added together, that's how you arrive at a end result with a building permit fee. If you would be so kind is to refer to the document where it talks about the pole barn example. It's the document that is labeled, I'll get it to you here in just a moment. Yeah, it's the Elbert County, it says pole barn example, so that's the accessory structure Group U, and it's 2,800 square feet. If you found that, that is a document that goes through the different steps of how to come up with the fee itself, okay? Permit fee category has two pieces to it, guys. Again, we have the three components, but now we're going to look at permit fee, the first one. And the permit fee category, first we need to look at the square foot construction cost, and that's on the valuation data table. So if you'll go to the document that says the August 2022 valuation table, this is at the front of the packet. And this is the fir-, and on the back page, this document here, this is what we, this is where we start, okay? Again, this is the building valuation data from August 2022, and it's this back page here. So if we start there, this is the square foot construction cost. And the building valuation data table, just for your information, this is an average cost of construction across the United States. It is interesting to note that if you look at the construction cost index, we have a document here that we can distribute on the fly for you. It is the Denver Quarter Three 2024 Construction Cost Index. If you'd be so kind to pass that down, that would be great. Thank you kindly. And if you look at that document, it does show that Colorado seems to fall within the average based on that construction cost index from 2024. And if you look at that figure on there where it says the 100, I've actually now distributed my copy, but pardon me, if you've got an extra one, that would be great. Thank you much, appreciate it. It says that we've got, you know, right in line with the state in the national average. And Matt, can you help me read that number there for me? I have a contact correction for readers, and my eye doctor told me that at some point, it's not going to work anymore, and it's arrived. And so, excuse me, I need readers like ASAP, and this has just happened over the last week. I feel like I'm just...
Your national average is at 185, Denver at 184.
Yeah, thank you. So we have that national average of 185. So if you would please reference this table again here, okay? This is the building valuation data, okay? And on the left-hand side, if you go down, please, to the residential, it'll say residential, like a single-family, one, one or two, okay? And then go across all the way to the VB, which is 5B. That's the category that we need to look at. And if you run that across, it'll show a figure. Matt, I'm leaning on you again here.
16608.
It says 16608, so we have that 185 as the, as that national average where, you know, our region falls into. And then this, this number here with the, that national average that we're referring to on this data valuation table is lower. So just file that away for the discussion as we continue. So now we can keep moving on with this example of the pole barn in the data, okay? We, basically, you have to find the construction rate, and that's exactly what you do. What we just did, you go to the 5B, go down, and then at the very bottom, you have Group U, the accessory, and then you get that number of about $66. So that's the first figure that we use in the calculation. Then you need to go to another table, and that's in the packet toward the front where it was basically after, you know, the BOCC resolution document, and then it shows the recorded documents in terms of what we're currently using, back to that August 2022. And then there's a, there's a page here, right here, okay? And this is the total valuation table, is by the International Residential Code, the IRC, and it's a fee schedule, and it's published by the international, the ICC, which is the, my acronym has just slipped me. Help me out, I need a lifeline from my friends. International Code Council, thank you very much, appreciate that. We are actually, in fact, using permit fee formulas from a 1997 Universal Building Code. So it was before the ICC was established. So we're, our numbers are a little lower than the current numbers. The current numbers, I can pass this out to you. This is Appendix AB, and this is out of the IRC from 2024, and this is the permit fee schedule. And it's just slightly gone up from that, you know, that pre-, the year that we're using back in 97. But what's interesting to note, if you look at all the years, the iterations since that time, since 97, when it actually went to the ICC, they, it hasn't changed. So this table has not changed, okay? And we'll dive into this more a little bit later when we're analyzing what the other jurisdictions are doing. So we reference that, and we look at the category of valuation. So for the pole barn example that we have, we actually go to this page two, the valuation table document, and we go to the 100,000 to the 500,000 line item, so that category there. And then it shows a calculation. And in our instance, it says 993.75 dollars for the first 100,000, plus $5.60 for each additional $1,000, okay? So that's, that's the end of that first component, the permit fee piece. And then you arrive at a number, and in this pole barn example, for the 2,800 square feet, we have a figure of $1,480.95, the first element. Then we go to plan review. Now, plan review, it's in Elbert County, the way we have it set up, it's 65% of the permit fee. So we just got the permit fee at 1,480, right, 1,400 approximately. And then you take 65% of that, and then that gives you the plan review number that we need to work with. And then the final element is the use tax. And then the use taxes, as a county use tax, we use 1% of half the valuation. So whatever the valuation was that we arrived at the beginning of the mathematical exercise, we use that, and then we get another number. So I can back up here, the plan review fee for this example with the 2,800 square foot pole barn, the accessory structure, $962 and some change, so that's the plan review fee. And then the use tax, if you run those numbers, you take half the valuation, multiply it by .01, and then you get $935. You add those three elements up, and then you get the total permit fee, okay? And the total permit fee was $3,378.57 when you add those three together, okay? Then we move on, please, in the packet, to the jurisdiction comparison. So this is where it gets fun. And we have two examples, and you'll see charts that look like this, okay? And one is for the accessory structure, the pole barn, and the other is for a single-family residence. And this gives us a very good idea of where Elbert County sits with, just with respect to these two categories, right? There's several others, but this was a good place to start, especially with the accessory structure, the pole barn, that's kind of a, somewhat of a common request, application we might see, and of course, a single-family residence as well. It's important to note, on the single-family residence example, we did not add a basement, and we did, we just kept it simple, we didn't add a garage, just to be able to calculate, because already you probably can see there's a lot of numbers and factors, and we'd have to throw in some other things into the mix. So for simplification purposes, it's just a single-family resident, no garage, no basement. Thank you. The jurisdiction comparison, so we did seven comparisons, five different counties that more or less surround us. So Lincoln, Arapahoe, Jefferson County, El Paso County, Douglas County, and then two municipalities, towns, one in the way of Elizabeth and the other Castle Rock. And again, we have the two examples, okay? Accessory structure and the single-family residence. The chart here, these charts, they show those three inputs, right? The permit fee, the plan review fee, and the use tax. And it's, you can see what the numbers are, excuse me, what the calculations are, what the numbers are that fit in and plug in for each of the jurisdictions that we were able to analyze.
Hey, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Am I missing it, the square footage?
Um, oh.
On this graph?
Yeah, just, there's a little note on that.
So all of these are based on a 2,800, all of these examples are based on the same 2,800 square foot.
If I had my readers, I believe the single-family resident was 3,000, is that right? Are we seeing that?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and then the 2,800 for the pole barn.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Great. So again, we have the three inputs here on the chart. And then it also mentions in one of the columns, you know, what ICC valuation table each of the jurisdictions are using. We can go into that a little bit more later. And if you look at the information here, the data, right, with the pole barn, let's start with that. The accessory structure, Group U, pole barn. For the counties, the five that we looked at, they range from anywhere from $500 to $3,500, okay? Elbert County is second highest in that evaluation at around $3,700. If you bring in the towns, the two that I mentioned, the range is 5,800 to 13,000. So the towns are higher than any and all of the five counties that we looked at. So that's where we land on the pole barn analysis in general terms. Switching now to the single-family residence, that chart, okay? We've got, in terms of the final number to get a permit with the different counties, we have a 1,700 to $8,300 range. Elbert County is second highest again in the county comparison category with the single-family residence. The towns, conversely, we've got a range of 18,000 to 32,000, so significantly higher on the towns with regard to this type of permit. Now we can look at, just drill even deeper into these charts and look at what are these other jurisdictions doing, right? And we can, and we can also break this out into those three categories, permit fee, plan review fee, and use tax. So the first observation that we can make, and it's pretty obvious, is that jurisdictions are using different ICC valuation tables. In your packet of information, we do have a section, it was labeled ICC valuation data tables used in other comparison jurisdictions. And we have all seven of those jurisdictions we looked at. We have the corresponding building valuation tables with, at the top of each of those pages, it shows which county or which municipality it is and what table they're using and what year. So that's the first thing, you know, and when you, when you're using a different valuation table, as you might expect, there's going to be different inputs, different figures, and it doesn't always go up, it's not linear up. So you can look at a 22 table that we're on and compare it to, let's say, the latest 2024. And if you, if you look at the Group U accessory category, the current table from 2024, instead of $66, it's $64. So it's actually less with the current, the current table, so they fluctuate.
So in practice, we will be using the most current table available?
It, this, it's a great, great comment, possible question. What we can, what we can do, sir, or what you all can do and consider is, like some jurisdictions actually use the most current valuation data table.
So because the resolution at the beginning of the packet approved that data table, we never upgraded or updated our data table because the resolution was not updated?
So it was just, that's where we landed, and that's where we are. So some jurisdictions, like if you look at, back to the comparison charts, right? If you look at that, you know, back to these documents here, and you look at what the other jurisdictions are using in terms of the years and the tables, some are using current tables and others are using dated tables, so to speak.
Well, the resolution could say, use data tables as they come out and change the verbiage on a new resolution.
Absolutely, yes, sir. So, and back to the point, yes, some jurisdictions just have that written in their, in their regulations and, you know, in their resolutions, et cetera, to where it says every, and by the way, the ICC comes up with a new updated document every six months. So it could be as an option for you all to consider, it would be like, okay, if we want to do that, we can craft a resolution and make that effective to where any, every time a new one's published every six months, Elbert County's using that current table, as an example. So moving on, or continuing on, rather, in terms of what these other jurisdictions are doing. So we're talking about the permit fee category, right? So there's the other ICC building valuation data tables, the different years. Again, Elbert County is on the August 2022 table. Let's see, four of the jurisdictions that we reviewed are using a version of the 2024. Again, there could be two versions within 2024 because it's published every six months, right? And then, and then to reiterate, some jurisdictions will just update automatically if that's in resolution when that new table is published. Now, another subcomponent within, again, this permit fee category we're talking about, about what these other jurisdictions are doing, what you all can consider, is it's called a regional modifier. So earlier, I mentioned that based on the construction cost index, and when you compare it to these tables that the ICC publishes, it does look like we're, you know, we're at a national average and we're actually, because we're using the table from ICC, which they're calculating it as a national average, it's lower than what the national average is saying that we fall into on that Quarter Three Denver Construction Cost Index figure. El Paso County is the only one that we researched that actually is doing a regional modifier. They make, they make an adjustment. And the, El Paso County, if you're not aware, is actually, works with other jurisdictions when it comes to their, their planning and building, or more building-specific, they're bundled into Pike's Peak Regional Services, it's called. And you've got El Paso County, Colorado Springs, and then some other smaller jurisdictions. Excuse me, they all, they all work with Pike's Peak Regional, and then they adjust their fees down, I think in part due to this multi-jurisdictional coverage that they're able to do. So when you, I'm sure you've, you, you, you know, you unearthed the fact that El Paso County did a regional modifier in the examples, and they've also done a plan review percentage adjustment, and we'll get to that in a moment. Then, we're still not done with the permit fee category in this, in this analysis. Then we have those, we have different formulas. So back to this, this document, let me point it out to you. So if you go back to our, what's approved currently, right, the August 2022 figure, and we pull out, we pull out this document here, okay? And this is the permit fee total valuation chart, this is a permit fee schedule, and this is from the IRC. Okay? And let's just take a look at it. Douglas County is using the same as we do in terms of what the formulas look like. So back to the pole barn example, if we want to kind of highlight it. If you go back to that pole barn example, and you look at that permit fee category, and under step one of permit fee, for the pole barn example, it says, multiply 2,800 square feet, I'm sorry, here is, we, you actually have to find the 100,000 to 500,000 dollar line item on that, on that chart, okay? So you go, you go to this chart here, and you find the 100K to 500K, because remember, we're working with this pole barn example, okay? And it falls into that 100,000 range, or between the 100,000 and 500,000, okay? And, and then you have the math behind it, okay? It basically says, you, it says the calculation is $993.75 for the first 100,000 dollars of the valuation, plus $560 for each additional $1,000. And if you recall in the pole barn example, when we did that math in that particular category, we ended up with a 1,480 as a figure for that. But trying to drive the point home here, as it relates to these different, these formulas, it is, it's basically, every jurisdiction is more or less doing something different in there. And there's fluidity in it, I mean, so you could decide to change that number. Instead of being for that 100,000 to 500,000 dollar range, instead of being $993.75 for the first 100,000, you could plug in a different number, okay? So there's flexibility there with this formula as part of the permit fee component. Now we go to plan review piece. All of the jurisdictions that we reviewed are doing the same as Elbert County, which is 65% of the permit fee number, except El Paso County. El Paso County, if my memory serves, does 28% of the plan review fee. And again, El Paso County is part of that multi-jurisdictional group that uses the, that one entity to do their, their building permit fees, which is Pike's Peak Regional. Now we go to use tax, the third element again, in this analysis, looking at what the other jurisdictions are doing. Douglas County, again, is using the same use tax calculation as Elbert County. Jefferson County doesn't have one, they've elected not to have a use tax. When it comes to retail goods, the property owner, actually, they have to submit to the state independently. The towns, by contrast, actually have two fees. So the two towns, Elizabeth and Castle Rock that we looked at, they have a county fee, so they're more or less would be collecting it for the county, and then they have their own town fee as well, okay? Now we can move on to, you know, really the heart of the discussion, and that's, you know, what's possible for you all to consider based on, you know, what we've, what we've been able to come up with. You know, we've already mentioned it, here's, here's an option, that you can go to the current ICC valuation data table as an option, right? You could make it where every six months, whenever it's updated, that's what the county goes to. You can select another year table that you'd like to go with. That's certainly up for your consideration, as is all of this. And there's the regional modifier. The regional modifier, again, El Paso County, in the examples we provided, was the only one that was doing a regional modifier. But let's just say, we look at, we looked at that Denver Construction Cost Index, right, as an example. It said it lined up with the, with the national average. Well, okay, maybe Elbert County material costs, it's going to be the same, but maybe perhaps labor's a little less or something, this is just a hypothetical, okay? I don't know. And, and if you, if you wanted to say, okay, like El Paso County, they have a .91 regional modifier. And and if you if you wanted to say, okay, like El Paso County, they have a point nine one uh regional modifier. Maybe that's that's a number you could look at, something like that. Uh, to where so when you when we go back like to the uh the group U accessory chart, right, the that data valuation table, and you've got the five B category, and you've got the group U, and you find that number, which is sixty-six dollars and some change. Um, it Pike's Pike's Peak, or I'm sorry, uh, um, El Paso County, they've got a point nine one modifier, so that maybe hacks off you know, a few dollars on that on that uh that number that you use in the calculations. So that's what that that regional modifier can can do. Plan review, that percentage, as mentioned previous, we've got the sixty-five percent of the permit fee. Very very industry standard. Um, again, El Paso County uh has deviated from that with its twenty-eight percent. So, you know, you can look at at that plan review fee. Of course, right now, we do uh have a an an extra cost with an outside contractor in the way of SafeBuild, but um regardless, that that would be on the table as well for you all to to look at uh in terms of that percentage and doing doing an adjustment, whichever way you you would wish. And then, like we talked about, that those formulas, right, back to the the permit fee element. Uh, when we did the pole barn, the valuation table document, the hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollar category. And then you look and then it says, all right, nine hundred ninety-three dollars seventy-five cents for the first hundred thousand plus five sixty for an additional for every additional thousand dollars on that valuation. All the jurisdictions are doing something different on that. So if you want to change, you know, again, you can move in any direction you want. Uh, you know, you you could say, you know, instead of nine ninety-three, say it's seven hundred for the first hundred thousand, and then, you know, instead of five sixty, it's four bucks, you know, kind of thing for every thousand. Just as an example. So that's that's uh certainly something that you can look at is that formula uh element. Also, in the in the packet, it's it's an aside in a sense, but it it does uh comprise uh part, you know, part of our fees. We have the contractor licensing fees. So in the packet toward the end, uh, almost to the end before that budget uh page. Uh, we just showed that there was an approved BOCC resolution from January of twenty twenty-four that had the most current contracting contractor licensing fees. There's a a caveat or a note at the bottom of that uh resolution where it covers on the second page the actual uh fee break breakdown. And it says that um there was a basically any contract license that was issued in twenty twenty-three did not have to be renewed in twenty twenty-four. Only new contract license in twenty twenty-four would uh would be would be accepted. So it's really the 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 previous board um decided that they wanted to pause on contractor licensing fees just to get a sense for for where we were on it because contractor licenses fees only began in twenty twenty-three in the county. And just as a just some little tidbit data information for you, in twenty twenty-three, there were five hundred and seventy-nine contractor license fees issued in the county, and then in twenty twenty-four, two hundred and fifty-eight were issued. Now moving on to uh the the last page here, which is which is the budget, it's a it's a snapshot of the budget uh for the building departments, the the last page in your packet. Uh, just showing uh just some figures from the last couple of years. Uh, expenses are just on one line item uh for this for this activity, um, because the majority of that is payroll and then contract services. And then the revenue that you see here, those are the those are the inputs, those four items, that's that's what uh that the building department would bring in. And on a percentage basis, approximately ninety-nine percent of the of what comes in to the building department. It comes from building permit fees. And you can see uh budgeted for for this year, um, about almost one point five million in expenses and then revenue at uh about two point six million. So um this is another area to look at. Um, you know, revenue, um, you know, where that goes in different departments because there's the general fund. It's a it's a bigger budget conversation, I believe, for uh, you know, to look at, you know, the different departments, how it works and the interplay there. But um if you were just strictly going to look at the building department and you look at the expense, the revenue that gap, let's say for this year, uh, showing, you know, that million approximately. Um, you know, is there, and this is for your your consideration, of course, is there uh an opportunity to, let's just say, reduce fees to to bring down the revenue number uh and get it closer to expenses? So um, that's uh, that's the big overview, and um, thank you so much for the the diatribe there. Um, and um, we're we're here to um engage in conversation, answer questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Discussion? Yeah. Um, I think we have a lot of discussion. I think this kind of opens up our eyes on how complex and difficult this process is. It needs to be simplified. I hope everybody in the room agrees agrees with that. After going through this table and that table and and using modifiers and different things. I mean, you could almost have a task force just on this particular issue. That's how complex that was that, you know, we could have broke that down into, you know, one topic, and then we discuss it another topic, and then we discuss it in another topic as we went through it. Might have been might have been more helpful because now I'm starting all the way back at the beginning with the ICC uh table.
Yes, sir.
Um, now, and and you know as well as I do that the verbiage on that table says you probably should use it, uh, regional modifier, don't use it as presented. And and that sort of thing. There's a lot of verbiage in there that warns um the user. The end user not does not rely on the permit, what is it? This data is only intended to assist jurisdictions in determining buil- building permit fees. This data table is not intended to be used as an estimating guide. Um, and the building values are fully furnished, not furnished, but uh completed with plumbing, heating, uh, you know, electrical, sheet rock, a fully furnished building. And then we go to the table to get our value. So our pole barn example costs twenty-seven thousand dollars. Right? The permit, uh, the plans were five hundred dollars. And we charged nine hundred dollars to review a five hundred dollar plan. So when you're the end user looking at building that building, you're going, why am I being charged nine hundred dollars to review a five hundred dollar plan for a pole barn? So we do need to make some adjustments here. Uh, I I recommend we look at uh regional modifiers. I re- I think we should look at simplifying this, creating maybe our own data table. Um, we're basing that review on sixty-five percent of the permit. Right? So if the permit number is three thousand, we're going to charge them two thou- you know, whatever sixty-five percent of three thousand is. But to just throw out a number, it doesn't really make sense to me that we should be basing it on that or the profitability of the department. Whether the department is generating uh revenue or not, we're here to provide a service to the citizens of the county, not necessarily generate revenue uh from our building department. It's great if we do. But if we're inefficient in that department, I don't want the citizens to have to pay more to make that up and make that difference up. Um, so yeah, we could go over this. I got a lot more comments and a lot more uh things to talk about in moving forward. But I'd like to turn it over to Brian or Dallas, and do you guys have any concerns or questions as well?
Well, I've got some questions, and I can hold off to later on that, but I would like to see this thing simplified because, I mean, I'm going from page to page, and I I kept up with you. But to the average citizen out there that's building something, I mean, we we need to be able to explain it. Simplify it and explain it where they understand it so they know what we're doing and why we're doing this. So it's just this is something I think that needs a lot of work on be done on it. Um, as we move forward, it's something that's certainly a big project. It's not not going to be a simple task. And I understand that. But anyway.
I've got just a couple of questions, Mark. Um, as far as the valuation table and the the number that comes up uh for the valuation. Is that uh number then transmitted directly to the assessor's office as that goes on the tax rolls?
Mr. Commissioner, I'm not sure, uh, you know, if if there's any interconnectivity there between the parties. Um, do you do you know, Rob, or I'll just defer to, okay?
So that's probably something we need to find out, too, is how um how when the building permit is pulled, uh, how does it get valued then at the assessor's office? Where where do they come up with their their number at that? Because that that would have long lasting effects, um, depending on where that number number comes from. The other um question perhaps would be be good. Can you go into detail what is involved in a plan review? Um, so that we understand where why that cost is where it's at?
Sure. I will actually refer to uh my colleague Matt Denny here on uh on plan review and the the elements uh behind it. Matt?
So a a plan review is the initial assessment of the plans in accordance with the codes that are adopted and amendments that are adopted by the county. And of course, we look at, you you can look at the diff- the different complexities that exist within a commercial building, a single-family dwelling versus a pole barn. And I understand that comment that you made about a pole barn. Especially without a finished interior, um, it's very simplistic. And so uh the 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 fees, the fees are courses are obviously established based on these fee schedules and have been for many, many years. Um, a lot of building departments adopt them such as this, maybe with some modification to them. Um, but that that sixty-five percent of the building permit fee, and just to break that down real quick, I mean, a building permit fee is funding the department so that it pays for gas in the vehicle, maintenance on the vehicle, the staff member that's taking the time to drive out to that property. Um, the plan review is, of course, paying for that administrative process, and then, of course, that plans examiner, which is a lengthy amount of education and certifications. And typically in our business, we see um wages for a plans examiner or can be considerably higher than what they might be for a field inspector. So a- all of those things are taken in consideration when you look at pulling a fee away from that building permit fee or a plan review fee. But yes, it's it's just a it's a full in-depth analysis of the plans that are provided. Um, there are usually there are round of comments that happen where the plans examiner is citing sections of the building code that need to be followed. Those comments are returned to that, you know, the owner of the plans, whether it be an architect, an engineer, or maybe a homeowner that submitted them. Um, they're going to work with that individual to get those plans up to a certain level of compliance. Um, in the state of Colorado, the state record retention laws for residential properties is a hundred and eighty days past the completion of permit. So, yeah, there is probably a little less focus on residential, um, especially when you talk about a pole barn. Um, if we're looking at a residential home, um, you know, those there are a lot of in-depth requirements, code requirements. When we talk about commercial buildings, it's the lifetime of that building plus ten years. So if you build a new commercial building in town here or in the county, if I'm the owner, I have that requirement. Uh, well, the county, I'm sorry, has that requirement to retain those records. We want to make sure, and as an entity like SafeBuild, I mean, we help out building departments all over the country, actually. We're making sure that the compliance on those plans is com- is is done upfront before the contractor starts to build. The other part of that is if if I start construction on a building without a fully compliant set of plans, I may get to a point where I have to make a change. That could be a costly change. You know, I've seen situations where they've ac- actually had to modify the size of the building and reduce it because they started building too soon and it's too close to a property line, so on and so forth. I mean, there's all all types of different scenarios. So I would say in the general scheme of things, when you look at these fees, yes, there are probably situations where where some projects, if you break it down to the labor cost of reviewing and maybe even doing inspections. There could be a slight offset from one to the next. I mean, you know, most jurisdictions create a situation like this, and I'm referring to this like building permit fee schedule. Um, and these valuations that are applied to them. To take care of the jurisdiction as a whole. So all of the residents are sort of subject to the same rules and and and, you know, at the end of the day, there there may be, if if I have a project and I've paid the same permit fee and I've called the inspector out three times and I've done such an exceptional job that my job's completed. But the next project might take six or seven visits. Or that plan review may take five or six different rounds of reviews to get to full compliance. Where on rare occasion, we have those projects that are submitted and maybe get through after a first review. So there's so many different variables when it comes to the labor part or the working side of the business. Um, but these are just, you know, these are kind of general guidelines, and as you can see, I mean, every jurisdiction, and if we went across the nation, you would see similarities between them. And however, they're valuing those buildings and putting together their fee schedules. Um, it's just kind of based on the community.
Question for you. So at any point, are we considering the actual cost of materials or labor? Or are we just strictly going off of the table for all for the projects that we're looking at?
To take a step further, in the building code itself, in the International Building Code and the International Residential Code, um, it has like a very loose generic definition of valuation. And it says that the material and the labor, right, to construct. Um, now, and as you pointed out, it it does reference this. It's this is not intended to be used, but it's a guideline, right? I have found in my twenty-one years working in building apartments, I was a building official before taking a this role with SafeBuild. This is a very close guideline. Now, it's probably not as accurate if you were in a Midwestern state. They their costs might be lower, their labor costs are lower, their wages are lower. So but in the state of Colorado, as Mark pointed out with that uh Consumer Price Index, it it's it's actually slightly lower than what the regional area is, but we're also out here away from the metro area, too. So it it's probably close, you know, to one.
So let me let me elaborate on that. Being away from the metro area. Um, people hear what their cost for a permit might be, and then pole barn example, it's twelve percent of his materials is the permit. And they might say, I'm not going to pull a permit. I'm in a rural area. Uh, I'm not going to pay three thousand dollars for a permit for a pole barn. And what they're going to do is they're just going to go ahead and build it. We don't have any code enforcement per se. How much revenue? I mean, we talk about revenue and expenses. How much revenue are we losing because people are saying, hey, I'm out in a rural area, these fees are too high. I'm just going to go ahead and move forward. Now, in the city or in the suburbs, they can't do that because there's code enforcement all over the place. They got the neighbors calling what is wondering what they're doing and complaining because somebody's building a building in their backyard. So so you see that a lot, and I think the um, you know, the enforcement's much much better and and you're getting a lot more compliance. Um, so that's one concern. The other one, go back to the review that we were talking about, some of them are going to be more complex. One option for us then would be to, hey, a commercial building, a residential building, it's going to be at sixty-five percent because it's more complex. A, you know, pole barn or a shell of a barn, that might be instead of sixty-five percent, that might only be forty percent uh for a plan review fee. So that might be an option uh going forward that we can look at and and adjust that going that way. But um, just some thoughts, just of what you were saying.
Well, if I could add this, o- over the years, I've had situations where I've like a homeowner that's going to build their own deck or do their own basement finish. Um, and, you know, maybe the valuation table doesn't represent that very well because it's very simplistic in nature. I mean, they're just using all wood, not not using a composite product, you know, because these are all things that if I use Trex decking versus, you know, just red standard redwood, I probably cut the cost of that in half.
Yeah.
So I what I have done, and and of course, the way this has been adopted in the the ordinance, that's what these gentlemen have to follow.
Yep.
Um, but, you know, I've had situations where Um, but, you know, I've had situations where I say, bring me a list of the material that you're purchasing, you know, whether that's from a local lumberyard or whatever, and then we'll, we'll factor in how much material cost there is and labor cost there is, and it may come under what this general rule is here, just because this is capturing everything generically.
And in that case, what, what would be the next step if, if that was the case? Because I'm not sure we're taking into account anybody that's doing the labor themselves. They go out and buy the material, they want to put up a pole barn, which was the case on our pole barn example, um, and they're saying, well, wait a minute, am I being charged for my sweat equity now? Um, you know, I paid twenty-seven thousand for the pole barn kit, and you guys are valuing me at a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars? And that's where the problem came up, and that's why we have that example in our packet. And what do you do in the cases where they're doing labor themselves? We have a lot of contractors, we got a lot of hand, a lot of handy guys and, and women out here, uh, what do we do in that case?
Well, the building code doesn't define that specifically, but it does say, it's a, it's a material and labor, and I understand sweat equity, I've always done my own work at my home, um...
The table's taken in as if it was paid for and finished.
Of course.
And a lot of cases, it's not finished, and the labor was not paid for. So we need to have some type of adjustments for those situations, so, because it feels to me we're penalizing hard-working citizens that are trying to do, do their own work.
Right, and I don't think that that's ever the intention, I mean, obviously...
No, no, I'm not saying it's the intention, I'm just saying that is the result in some cases.
Well, and I...
Or could be the result in some cases.
What I have done in the past, in my experience, if I have, if I had a homeowner that came to me and said, I bought the entire kit, um, you know, for this twenty-seven thousand dollars, I mean, I would factor in if they're going to, you know, pour a concrete slab in that, or if there's additional costs for, for...
Oh, for sure.
Footing and so on and so forth, you know? And then normally what I would do, if it's a homeowner do it, I just double the material cost. So the twenty-seven would go to fifty-four, not a hundred and eighty-six.
Okay, I don't see that anywhere on any of these tables.
Well, yeah, and that's just, um...
That's something we maybe adopt?
That's a, that's such an option. Consideration, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, that's, um, I mean, what would the average cost for me, what would I expect to pay, I guess, if I called someone and said, please come out and build a pole barn, I want, you know, a concrete slab in it, I want lighting?
Ninety-five thousand for a twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Ninety-five? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, and if we could put this thing in, I, I had a situation once where I had a nationwide builder that was using, we were using the table just based on what the jurisdiction had adopted, and, and they actually came to me and said, you know, we can actually cut that price by a little bit, you know? Instead of one sixty-six, they could build at one fifty-two per square foot. Now, the only thing I could do, based on what was adopted through the ordinance of the jurisdiction I was in, was say, provide all the documentation that would prove that to me, right? Um, it, it's called an audit, and it, it's, it's a lengthy process and whatever, and of course, what I did is I put together information that showed if we did value them at one fifty-two instead of one fifty-six, I mean, here's the difference in cost, you know? And of course, at the end of the day, it's, it's not much, I mean, it reduces it by six and a half percent or something. Um, and at the end, it, it, the decision that the home builder made was, we'll just go based on what, what the, the town has adopted, you know? Um, we didn't get into it, but I can see if you have such a large swing in cost, um, from, like, you know, well over a hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Well, not right now. I think we'll have to, uh, look at what we've talked about and, um, kind of move forward with some more communication and, you know, we kind of digest this meeting a little bit and schedule something again to kind of dial it in as a path forward. Um, but I think we got some good ideas, and I think we need to make some adjustments to it, very complex. I think Byron was right when he said it needs to be simplified. Um, it'd be nice to be able to put it on our website, and the contractor pulls it up and says, hey, this is what my permit's going to be.
Right.
Based on, hey, I'm building a twenty-eight hundred square foot, um, pole barn, you know, that sort of thing. Well, we don't, we don't have it now.
No.
Okay.
I would think that everybody, if I could say, everybody could take this and calculate it out, and I don't think anybody could really understand the complexity of this thing, and everybody would have a different number.
You need an engineer.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and is, to your point, you said, you know, how you would do it, but you may not do it the same way, so we need something concrete that's, it's in there, that's published, that everybody can simply look at and understand, and, and we're not here trying to make money off of permits, that's not the point here, so, anyway.
So, Commissioner Schröder?
So, that's, that's another part where the valuation comes in, um, we need to see where, where that's at, and I, I agree, it's not intended to be a profit, uh, center. However, there's a lot of other external costs, uh, not just within the building department. We only have three departments that are revenue generating in the county, and, uh, so the, all the supplemental departments such as IT, HR, finance, uh, administration, um, the list goes on and on, um, also has, is supporting, uh, the building department, and so those, those factors have to be, uh, considered, uh, as well. Um, it's not, it's not a straight line, uh, on what the building department expenses are versus what the, um, revenues are within there to, to say this is how much exact profit that's being generated. So there's, there's complexities to it on, on all sides. I'm, I'm more than happy to continue to look into, to what we can do to, to help streamline and make it more, uh, cost-effective for our citizens, but we need to take into account the whole picture.
If I may, uh, commissioners, uh, just to, to highlight, recap some of the things that we've heard here, um, obviously, the simplification is something we can talk about further, uh, the valuation of component as it relates to the assessor's office, uh, also the, the plan review, the different percentages depending on the type of project perhaps is an option. How do we handle the labor part of, of, of these calculations if, if folks are doing their own work? So, you know, is there a way, like, the, the example that was provided, do you double the material cost, but just as an example, um, and, and not do any, any labor? Um, and, uh, and of course, a regional modifier is something to, to look at as well, so, um, that's what we heard from you, and we look forward to, obviously, uh, further conversations and, and working with you, and we're here to, uh, provide the information that you're, that you need to have to make the, the best informed decisions.
Great presentation, by the way, Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I went into the weeds, and like I told my boss, the county manager, not only in the weeds, but down the rabbit hole in this, in this exercise, so I know a lot more than I did maybe a couple of weeks ago, so it was actually really educational, and I appreciate, uh, our planning manager, Rob, and, and Matt Denny, uh, from SafeBill for, for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Share it.
All right, and with that, we will, uh, adjourn this, uh, work-study session on building permit fees. Thank you.